It is six thirty, so I'll call the meeting to order. We have eight forum, all our regular members are present. Um, do we have any added agenda? Discussion with the other commissions. And we might want to move that up on the agenda. We have so many visitors joining us. What would people think about moving item nine to fall after approval of minutes? Or somewhere else early in the agenda? I'm sorry. Number thirteen. Your commission discussion on open space. Thinking we should.
I'll make a motion to take number thirteen out of order. Okay, move it after meeting minutes.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, a motion was made and seconded, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Um, legal notices, do we have any legal notices? Okay. Public participation, is there anybody from the public who had something they would like for a that's not on the agenda? Anybody in the room? None, anybody online? Okay. Then we'll move on to approval of minutes. We have the minutes from the September fourteenth meeting. Are people satisfied with it? Any corrections, changes that people feel are needed?
I have one.
Okay.
So we're here on page eleven. Line four twenty, I apologize, I didn't know the condition numbers and this point or which one?
Ten or one?
On ten, line four nineteen.
Is your question mark, question?
Four nineteen? So was that the discussion of taking the thirty feet at road grade?
I don't know what condition it had because I didn't have
I don't know. The condition of the height of the pile.
It was one of the previous, it was a condition of the previous. No, we have
The discussion was where to take the measurement for the height of the piles.
I think that's
That's what the discussion was, we never we were gonna refer back to the original permit. Eleven. Ria. We were trying to decide where the thirty foot mark would be.
Yeah.
Because the elevation's almost it's almost a ten foot drop, I think. Uh, condition number twenty.
Thank you.
Thirty feet above the distance.
Other changes? Okay, does somebody want to, there's no further discussion? Does somebody wanna make a motion to approve minutes? With that in it.
Make a motion that we approve regular meeting minutes eighteen ten of September fourteen, twenty twenty one, as amended on page ten. Line four nineteen to read condition number twenty.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. There was somebody who didn't get a chance to raise something in public participation, Noreen?
Yes, hi Anne, thanks. Um, I was trying to get to the hand thing and it disappeared on me. Um, Noreen Farmer, two forty seven South Water Street, East Windsor. I actually have a question about on your agenda. Um, for public participation, it's always says that it can't be about anything on the agenda. Is that by statute or is that a local thing?
I don't know.
So sorry.
Good question.
So, um, it's it's based on the fact that the planning and zoning commission has applications which are site plan and special permit. And if we allowed comment on applications that were on the agenda as a site plan, for example, it would effectively turn every matter that the commission considered into a public hearing. So we limit the discussion at the public participation level of the agenda to not items that are on the agenda so that the comments related to applications which have public hearings happen during those points, if that makes sense.
Uh, yeah, it makes sense. Um, my concern with it is that, um, a lot of times people in town don't realize there's even something on the radar until it shows up on the agenda. Either as a discussion point or a, um, you know, just somebody coming in to visit or whatever. Um, so I think sometimes what happens is people don't know about it, but then they can't talk about it. So then they feel unheard, especially if it's something that doesn't require a public hearing, which in a lot of cases there are no public hearings, you know, if if it's zoned for what they wanna do and they follow the rules and they come in exactly as it is. There's no opportunity for the public to to chime in on it because they didn't know about it. And I'm, you know, I just think that sometimes it people may take it as it being lack of transparency. And I'm not sure how anybody really knows what's going on until it's on your agenda. You know, I don't think on the planning and zoning site, there's anything about, you know, things that might come up. Um, so it it kind of sometimes looks like a an area where the public doesn't get to participate because of the way it's set up. So I was just curious if it was statute driven or if it was our choice to do it that way. But that was it, thank you.
Thank you for the comment, it's something for us to think about. Um, we do have to be careful on the things that are regulatorily required to have a public hearing to not compromise that process and have comments coming left and right, we need them to come in during the hearing. Um, but on other things that are, I'll say advisory and somebody is just talking about something. Um, there may be room to consider, but a lot of things are going to have a hearing later in the process and you don't wanna compromise the legality of what we're doing.
Yeah, and I understand that, so it was just something that I brought up, you know, I thought about it because you know, it just seems like sometimes you're stopped from giving any input because you don't really know what's going on until it's on and then it's too late, so it was just a thought, thank you.
I just wanna add two quick things so that people know. Number one, the agenda, the way that the commission structures the agenda, the receipt of applications line, that that placeholder is, so the first time an application comes across our desk in the office, when it gets officially received by the commission, it goes there, so that's the first time anybody um, is is basically being informed. And so we have that as a standing item so that people know this is what's in the hopper for subsequent meetings. The other thing that you can do from the web, from the website is you can subscribe to the planning and zoning agendas. So when they're posted, you'll be notified. Um, so if you wanna see what's going on and you don't wanna have to remember that you need to check agendas on the website, you can subscribe to that and sort of that'll passively come to you, just so people are aware.
That's helpful. Okay, next on our agenda, we were going to move up the discussion with on open space with the other commissions in town. We had some guests invited and Ruth, you are gonna lead this part of the short conversation.
I've had some handouts that she'll pass down this way at table. And the folks that are here.
Maybe. Jim, oh, you got.
Conservation and development implementation working group met probably five months ago, end of April. And really reviewed all the action items that are listed out in the plan of conservation. And what came out of that meeting was this joint, the desire to have a joint meeting of the different commissions that are involved in implementing the plan. And so if folks wouldn't mind, um, just introducing yourself, come to participate in this workshop and the commission you're you're from. In brand new, I'm a conservation commission. John Grant, Conservation Commission at the Cultural Commission.
Albert Grant, Conservation Commission Chairman. Put them in on what ones, Mike, chairman.
I think it's in the catch to him.
On Baker's Works, Selectmen and Vows.
Paul Anderson, he's remotely from the WPCA.
Jim Richards from the WPCA.
There, Moscow Board of Selectmen.
Charles Mardell, Board of Selectmen.
I'm Regis, as a board of selectmen.
Well, it's multi seat director of recreation and recreation services.
Anybody else online? Where we come another commission?
Thank you. So the objective for this workshop is to really focus in on open space in East Windsor and determine actions that we can take together to enhance and align what what we're doing. The end goal, um, East Windsor wants to maintain their rural, its rural character and to do that, we need to be mindful of be preserving open space. And there's a lot of different tentacles in the plan of conservation development for actions. Um, and we can talk about that. Mike, if you wouldn't mind putting up the the documents that show, here's the initial where open spaces. Just to get
And just as a caveat, this is all from the previously prepared P O C D, so we didn't run these maps.
Yeah.
You know, um, so there there's something that has been done since then and it's not shown here, that's why. Don't get worried.
Twenty sixteen vintage, right? So just for starters, um, this map is showing state owned and town owned open space. The state owns about eight hundred acres, at least in twenty sixteen they did. And the town about seven hundred acres. And then there's some hashing on that map that shows perceived open space. And that is undeveloped land, not necessarily certainly protected land that could be developed at some point, so. There's that snapshot. I would say that for East Windsor and our plan of conservation and development, the priority, open space. With farmland at the top of the list. Protecting natural resources, rivers, streams, uh, critical wetlands and groundwater resources comes next. And then having continuity of open space for such things as wildlife corridors or passive recreation and the like. The next one?
Yeah, so I'll have this, hopefully it'll make people seasick here, but I kinda leave it here.
There, but it was state owned. That's state open space.
So I think, um, you know, the couple of things to point out and I'll zoom out a little bit so that we don't have to go back and forth. But because the hashing goes, is used for different reasons in different maps, but um, I think one of the things that, you know, will point out um, is vacant land with additional development potentials, they're they're talking in the thousands of acres. Um, and then agriculture land, agricultural land at the time of the P O C D again, four thousand acres. So, um, you know, thinking about the discussion we're gonna have today um, and with, you know, Joan Nichols, who's here to speak to you guys, that's a large part of kinda why we wanted to have this discussion. And you know, if there's other questions about the map, we can try to answer them. Um, if anybody has anything specific, but I think you can probably
Okay, just a quick click over to the continuity, do we have the corridor plan? Put that to people's so.
But I'm just, you know, the total acreage of the of the town?
Yes, on the that the list of who and what, East Windsor is sixteen thousand nine hundred and sixty. So we have twelve percent.
Twelve percent open space.
Open space. Reading that from the twenty sixteen conservation development.
That does not include farming, but just dedicated open space.
State owned town.
Potential is much higher.
Potential is from work, yeah. So, um, and there's a lot of different ways to get there, whether to preserve, whether it's through development rights or easements or parks. So we wanna offer some different perspectives, you know, we talked about agriculture being the priority, but there's an important perspective that has come out of our plant conservation and development discussion. And we have Melissa Matisse here, Director of Recreation and Community Services. And she'll talk to us about considerations for open spaces, she developed her master plan for parks and recreation. Would you like to speak with us?
Alyssa.
Hi, Mr. Gotti.
What is a matter plan?
Master plan, master plan, that's not, I, that's me. Darn, I missed one of my typos. The first one is okay. Uh, thank you for having me this evening to come and chat with you guys. Uh, we are embarking on our first master plan within parks and recreation, um, just in the process of hiring uh, the beta group to facilitate that for the town of East Windsor. Uh, so we will be starting that actually next Tuesday. And with that will come the opportunity for the community to weigh in on uh, all aspects of parks and recreation and what this the community would like to see within their parks. Um, and we're also going to do a full assessment of the parks that we currently have. Um, so that's about seven parks, um, that we currently maintain and and take care of uh, with the help of D P W. So with that said, we have a lot of people that have asked for trails. Uh, we have some people that have asked for boating access to the Connecticut River. Uh, when I first came in two thousand and five, uh, there was a grant, um, applied for through Yukon for handicap accessible fishing. Um, and so that's something that we've always kind of had on our our radars as an option to facilitate. Should funding become available, it really all boils down to funding, I mean, takes money to make money and I don't have a printing machine. So we are always looking for grants, uh, working with D E P for trail grants, uh, working with Skenic Watershed Commission, trying to, um, facilitate and help with the legislators that are working on the Rails to Trails program.
The conversion of the rail line.
Yep, and then similar to what Vernon has with their Rails to Trails program. So just trying to come up with as many different passive recreation opportunities, we do have the Shumi property um, here in East Windsor, um, that is a passive recreation opportunity, um, so that's something that we're looking to expand upon. And maybe work in some nature, uh, aspects to the curriculum that we currently run, both with the schools and uh, in recreation in general. Um, so we're we're excited to get going on the master plan and hear what the community is looking for.
I've got a whole question, that Rails and Trails, definitely the Trolley Museum ends the tracks and
No, no, so there's two different projects that are in various phases of discussion. The Trolley Museum is trying to become more of a living history, um, display and they have a plan for doing that. But that's all along privately held, I think it's all privately held rail line. The part that, or the project that Melissa referred to um, is a, an effort that has been initiated by State Rep. Carroll Hall. Um, and that would be to turn this railroad track back here from about where we are, someplace around here, all the way to the state line into a bike trail, uh, rip like a paved rail to trail. It's called linear park, kind of similar to the canal trailer with their locks or if you go out, um, there's another one in Bolton.
Grand Reed.
So they're they're two separate distinct lines.
Thank you.
It just helps with the overall connectivity of of the towns and the adjoining towns as well and just trying to connect the two and um, bringing people into town, shopping local, all that kinda stuff, being able to stop somewhere along the way.
Does the town have any property along the Connecticut River? Oh, yeah.
We do, we do own, it's just accessing, accessing it and having parking that becomes
North Water Street or South? Yeah.
Uh, South Water Street is is most of where our access is.
All of your park.
Yeah, that's a small section there. Because I thought everything else there belonged to the adjacent houses across the street.
Most of it is.
Yeah.
So we were approached, um, oh, as part, I think it was part of the P O D um, about extending the canal trail across the bridge and then up the, um, Connecticut River towards the high school. Uh, but the issue there is, it is, there is a lot of privately held parcels. And as soon as you get the one guy who says, not on my property, you can see an arm dream.
Yep.
That is literally where the sidewalk is.
Right, and when the results came out from the Route Five study that they did, we had a lot of phone calls of people asking, when is that trail going in and when can we start using it? And it's not as simple as as that, so, uh, but there is definitely interest. And we're hoping with the master plan that those same people will come out and help facilitate that conversation.
When you think of recreation and open space, there's also privately held um, opportunities in that sports bubble and the fields there.
So we work with Sports World on a number of different, um, opportunities of field swapping, um, if we need to rest a field. Um, we, we're very community oriented and we would reach out to each other as as needed. There's public private partnerships, um, that could always come about as well, so.
Question about the process of master plan and the public participation.
Sure.
Are there gonna be like a series of meetings or surveys?
Um, I believe, yes, uh, we have not had our initial meeting yet, but, um, just with their R F P or F Q that they've submitted that they're going to have multiple opportunities for the public to weigh in. Um, I'm assuming both electronically via a survey as well as in person and virtual meetings.
Anybody online that has questions?
Melissa, I'm just wondering, um, have you had much inquiry into equine access at various park trout though?
No.
Has there been any discussions in the recreational arena, the A T Vs and off-road vehicles? Because there seems to be a lot of it in East Windsor. It's not clear it's where it's allowed and where it's
Yeah, we'll, we get an occasional phone call, um, asking if they can ride it within the parks and but it's very, it's rare.
I'm gonna follow up on that, and you probably know better than I, but my understanding is that there's a statute that allows for A T V use on private land. And then the D E P was supposed to identify or public, uh, public location where where A T V use could be done, but they've never done that, it goes back to like eighteen six.
Yeah, I know it's one of those longstanding issues of, um, people not wanting it, yet there being a lot of it that goes on, probably not legally, and finding a solution to that. I feel like on a town park or on a freeway, it may not be the right mix with little kids riding bikes and whatever.
I see where you're going, so so when the notion of doing linear park was first brought up, the, uh, I had an initial conversation with Representative Paul and then actually I spoke to those gentlemen. Um, and I asked the chief, um, if if they were to, um, install a linear park on what is already an abused area for illegal A T V use, if that would exacerbate the problem and his response was it would not. Uh, even if it's something that is controllable, something that's enforceable. Whereas currently, you start Jason's guys, they duck up and push, that's the end of where the freezer goes. So they, um, that was the first question I asked.
No, I I just, my assumption would have been little kids in strollers and, um, little kids on bikes may not go well with people going fast on A T Vs.
Well, in the town of East Windsor, once you put that solar field in and do that Rails or Trails, that's gonna nip about ninety percent of it. That's where everybody rises, that huge pitch.
Jump into the other side of town. That discussion is fun, but you talked about the river. The river is probably one of our main sources of future economic growth. Alyssa, um, is our master plan coordinating with what's going on with Windsor lots? That we discussed years ago, I think it might have been now in Big Bear, I was joking with about building a pier out for people to fish into the Connecticut River. I mean, are these the things we're discussing? I mean, are these the things we're discussing now? Is this part of the master plan, something way out of the box? You know, we might not achieve it, but it is a possibility.
Sure. We, again, we haven't had our initial meeting yet. We're supposed to meet next Tuesday. So we will put everything on the table. They've asked for previous grants that we've applied for to analyze anything that we might want to apply for, just a list of them, so they can help us kind of facilitate a structured timeline and idealistic and not pie in the sky potential projects that we might be able to accomplish.
I understand. I just know Windsor lots, they cooped up the trail and ended up with a four-year partnership with the apartment complex. So that's what I'm asking. Are you thinking, you know, I heard discussion of private, you know?
So Volunteer Park's already part of our park system, so building that and expanding upon, potentially upon that is something that will be had as a conversation. You're welcome.
We also have Joan Nichols, who's the Executive Director of the Connecticut Farm Bureau here, to give us her perspective on open space as it relates to agriculture, land, and might be able to harness to further our goals.
So, good evening, everybody. My name's Joan Nichols. I'm the Executive Director, Connecticut Farm Bureau Association. And just for the record, we're at a Weatherfield, Connecticut, and we're a private nonprofit member servicing organization. We've been serving the agricultural community in Connecticut for 102 years. So thank you for being here. And I think, Jason, thank you for, yeah, nice to see you. Thanks for considering us. So a couple of things. First of all, I'm happy to leave these with you. American Farmland Trust just updated their conservation options for Connecticut farmland, so I'll leave these with you. And then updated, and not as many copies, is the latest planning for AgD that just came out. So I'll leave those resources for you. So I'll just start out by saying that farmland preservation is critically important, but it's also very complicated. And I applaud you for thinking about this now because I've been 38 years in land-based occupation, working lands. And we are hitting like this perfect storm of what's going to happen with farmland in the state of Connecticut over the next 15 years. And the reason being is because we have an aging population of farmland owners. We have what's going on with climate change. And I think, I don't think anybody could have seen the news this year on what's happening with some of the flooding in our farmland. So the challenge of earning a living farming with, you know, weather was always like the farmer's either best or worst enemy. And I think it's going to become far more challenging. We are experiencing exorbitant land prices, so the price of land continues to increase. And I live in eastern Connecticut. I lived in Lebanon. I'll talk a little bit about the work that Lebanon's done. I live in Franklin now. But the prices even in eastern Connecticut have prepped up considerably. I can't imagine where they are in your neck of the woods in the 91 corridor. And obviously, they don't make more of it. So now's the time to think about how you're going to address the pressure on the farmland that you have now. And farmland owners are at this, going to be this point where they really have to think about what they're going to do with farm transition planning. Who is going to own this land? Who's going to farm it? Do they? And the other thing is there's more and more farmers that don't have family members that are interested in inheriting the property, or maybe they're interested in inheriting the property, but they're not all that interested in farming. So it's very complicated. So with all of that little background information, I think it's important to think about how your community is going to address the protection of your farmland. And there's lots of options, and that's part of, you know, what the conservation options gives you, you know. Do you look at how much land you have for farming in the town of East Windsor? And you look at it in terms of private land. Is the, are you interested in encouraging farmland owners to go into the different farmland protection programs? The Connecticut Department of Agriculture has the Farmland Preservation Program, which is a great program administered through the Connecticut Department of Agriculture. USDA Natural Resource Conservation Service also has a program to fund the protection of farmland. And then there's land trusts, local land trusts that are interested in protecting farmland. And then, of course, we have private nonprofits like Connecticut Farmland Trust, which their sole mission as a land trust is protect farmland. Under all those scenarios, the landowner, the private, the land stays in private ownership entitled. But all of those programs fund the selling of the development rights. So that in perpetuity, the owner of that property gets a pot of money from whoever's going to fund the program or the project. And then in perpetuity, the land can never, ever be developed. That keeps the land in private ownership. That's probably the best case scenario is because the town still gets tax money off of it. It's taxed under Public Act 490, but you still get tax revenue off of it. It doesn't cost the town, you know, you could, many towns have funding set aside to help with farmland preservation. The town of Lebanon always has funding in their annual budget for farmland preservation. And oftentimes, the projects that are funded are actually funded through numerous entities. The state of Connecticut puts some money in, USDA Natural Resource Conservation puts some money upfront. Maybe the town puts some money upfront, and everybody kind of comes together to make the project whole so that there's enough money generated so the farmland owner is interested in selling the development rights and there's enough financial resources to do that. That's your best case, in my opinion, best case scenario, because you're keeping it in private ownership. You're protecting the land in perpetuity. And the family still has a choice as to what, they can sell it, they can sell it to other family members, they can deed it. You know, they can put it on the market, it just can never, ever be developed, and it's still on the tax rolls. Some towns actually take the approach of actually trying to purchase the farmland themselves, and then the town holds title to it. That's fine if there's a property that comes up and or you feel that the town can afford to do that, that's fine. But then you end up with stewardship issues, who's going to steward this land? And then you get into sometimes a conflict of interest as to what this land is actually supposed to be used for. Because once the town owns it, and it looks like farmland or we think we're protecting it as farmland, but the wildlife people have a different idea versus the bird people, versus the recreationalists, versus there's a lot of competing interests when the town owns it, and it could work. And then even when the town does own it, many towns own farmland. The town owns it, they lease it. And sometimes that works and sometimes it doesn't, depending on how the town feels about the different types of farming that could take place on it. So that, those are some of your options. The town Lebanon, and we always tend to point a lot at the town Lebanon, I've lived in Lebanon for 29 years. They have the most amount of permanently protected land in the state, and that town has done, for a small town, has done a remarkable job of identifying their resources. And I'll give you an example. One of the options you have is Public Act 490, the open space classification, which is that municipal option that you, as the municipality, can choose to adopt where property owners that don't meet 25-acre threshold for forest land and aren't farmers, but have land that could be developed and have development pressure, you could provide a reduced option, tax option to them as in the open space. And I went into the town of Town Planner in Lebanon a few years ago, and I said, "How come Lebanon doesn't do the open space classification?" And the town planner, literally like three keystrokes, brought up the town Lebanon, like you did with your data layers, and then all of the state-owned land and, you know, land that, because Lebanon has a lot of state-owned land as well as the Savin Farm, which is a farm that's protected. And then they brought up all the land that's like open space, that's part of like a subdivision, open space. And then another keystroke, which I thought was really interesting, he brought up all the land that's currently being assessed as either forest land or farmland. And that was really, and then all the parcels that have a permanent agricultural or conservation easement on it. And it really starts to give you an idea of exactly what the landscape looks like. And at the end of the day, there was like 8%, less than 8% of the land would have been available for open space. It just wasn't worth doing. But you could visualize where you were and where you needed to be. And then that town happens to be a town that has adopted conservation subdivisions, and they really embraced, even when there is a subdivision that comes in, configuring the subdivision through their subdivision regulations that allows the protection of the available farmland with some clustering of the houses in certain parts of the property so they don't lose all the available farmland. So there's lots of options, and it's great you're starting this discussion. But I also think it's good that all the commissions are here talking to each other so that P and Z, you know, and maybe looking at your subdivisions. And then, at the end of the day, and I know a number of years ago, I worked with the town of East Windsor when you were developing your regulations for farming. And at the end of the day, you have to have the economic climate in town for farms to be able to be profitable. And I don't use the word survive, I use the word profitable. Because you could protect all the farmland you want in the world, but if farmers can't make money farming, or you don't have the regulatory or economic climate in your town for those farm businesses to stay profitable, then you can protect all the land in the world. But if somebody can't make money farming it, that's all for loss. So I'm happy to answer questions or ideas. But I can leave you the guide. Sure.
Thanks for coming out.
You're welcome.
I was specifically wondering, you know, has the Connecticut Farm Bureau had a role in any, you know, going to the Siding Council and discussing or, you know, or against solar sites on farmland?
We have weighed in on, so we are an advocacy and lobbying organization, and we are driven by the policies that our farmer members bring to us. We are what's called the grassroots organization, so we're very, very bottom up. We, at the state level, don't tell our farmers what we think we should do and what's going to work for them. The farmers come to us and say, "This is a problem," or "We have a solution." And then we work on legislation, both on the state and federal level, because we also lobby in Washington DC. The solar on farmland issue, as I'm sure many of you, if not all of you in the room, is an incredibly contentious issue. And it's especially contentious, and I'm going to be honest with you, for Farm Bureau, because we have farmers that are livid that they're losing farmland, leased land in particular, land that they lease to somebody that went out and put a, you know, a commercial solar array on a piece of farmland that they used to lease. And our dairy farmers are heavily reliant on leased land. Dairy industry leases 80 to 85% of the farmland in the state, and they're struggling to get farmland that they can lease. And they have to travel further and further and further from the farm to get the equivalent amount of acreage. So farmers, we hear on one ear, I've got farmers like, "What are you doing? I'm losing my leased land." And I have farmers on the other side, and the private property rights issue is we have to be, we have to be sensitive to that. And far be it for us to have any sort of policy that dictates what a farmer or landowner can and cannot do with their land. There's a lot of discussion going on with solar on farmland. We did, in two years in a row, we have tried to get legislation passed, and we'll try it again this year, to try to get somebody independent that is sitting, that can sit on the Siding Council to strictly look in the, look out for the interests of agriculture. So we'll try it again, because that's been a prior, one of our, the farmers came to us and said, "We need representation on the Siding Council." So we'll try that one again. And, you know, the discussions that I've had with, you know, and other groups concerned about the loss of farmland to solar arrays is, you know, you gotta, I call it just smart citing, like, put it, even if you have to put it on a farm, don't put it on the best land that the farm has, you know. But that, if that's something that's, it's going to come up this legislative session. And I think we have to look at what other states are doing, which is much smarter about what they're doing with solar on farmland than we are.
But I have two follow-up questions.
I knew that was going to come up. I knew that topic was going to come up.
So I think one of the things that Alan was trying to drill down on, Public Act 17 to 18, gives basically consideration from the Department of Agriculture for private farmland and deed per forest. That gives them party status in any, anytime they seek to exert it. My first question is, can the Farm Bureau ask for party status and grant party status? I don't think they can, because they don't have a property.
Right.
And so the second question is pertaining to that legislation about getting a seat on the Siding Council. And I'm not a member, but I'm a fan of the Farm Bureau. I, has there been consideration about trying to get one of the vacant seats on Bureau built by an agriculturalist?
That's a good question.
Because that's just as important as the Siding Council.
Right.
And it's kind of like the forgotten one.
Right.
They sneak all kinds of stuff through here.
They do. Yeah, yeah, that's a good point. Yes.
I was wondering if your organization or Department of Agriculture or somebody reaches out to the farmers so that they know about these programs and can avail themselves before they sell off their land?
We do on a regular basis. The program's been in place since the, the Farmland Preservation Program's been in place since the 1970s. So it's not, it's not a new program. We do on a regular basis. I mean, we get, I get farmers almost weekly coming, calling up the office and saying, "I'm thinking about protecting my farm. What options are?" I sit on the Farmland Preservation Advisory Board for the state. I also sit on the Board of Directors for Connecticut Farmland Trust. So I'm happy to sit down with any farmer and go over some options, and, you know, of course, I send them the guide. One of the things that the towns should be doing is holding forums on farmland preservation for the farmers in your community. And I don't know if East Windsor has done that, but I know folks, when the Department of Ag would come, I'm sure Connecticut Farmland Trust would come. I've done programs with Connecticut Farmland Trust for, just invite us and we'll come, you know, at least to expose them to the information. But that's something that we find the most effective way to do that is on the local level. You know, if you, the town periodically hold forums on farming, on Saturday morning breakfast around farmland preservation and farmland preservation options, and invite me or invite somebody from Connecticut Farmland Trust or the Department of Ag, and we could come with a box of guides and just have a nice little, you know, discussion around a cup of coffee on what their options are. The one thing I will tell you that farmers are not crazy about, my previous Executive Director of Connecticut Farm Bureau said to me, sometimes people, they bring up a map and they go, "Oh, look at all this farmland here, and I think we should protect that one, that one, that one, and that one." And nothing makes private owners bristle more than to see their property on like a bullseye. Because they're like, "How come I'm on this map?" And it happened to me. I still own 80 acres of land, forest land, which is considered core forest in the South End, Lebanon. And the Lebanon P O C D that they just got updated literally has my 80 acres of land as a bullseye, as an area that should be protected for core forest in the South End, Lebanon. I'm like, "That's great, but you know, I own that." You know, so it's sort of like, it'd be good if somebody talked to me about what you're thinking, you know? Maybe we could work something out, but, you know, that's the other thing, you have to be, you know, you know, you have people who've owned this land. Their farmers are very proud people, and they should be, and they work this land for And they've worked this land for generations and it, it, it's a. You know, it's, it's a subject that has to be handled with, with compassion and understanding.
I have a perception, maybe I'm totally wrong in my perception. That there's actively farmland and then there is. What was farmland and either farmer has passed away or it's no longer farmed and it. Grows up as open space, sometimes mode, sometimes coming back as forestry. Um. But. I still perceive it as farmland, although it's not actively used.
Yeah. I mean, again, this, it, it's all based on your soils and just because it's growing. You know, asphalt or early successional habitat doesn't mean that the soils aren't suitable for farming. So you know, again, it's not just because it actively be farmed, but you're right. It's, it's also that the, you're protecting this. When you protect farmland, you're protecting the soils. And what's suitable for growing. So. Yeah, I mean, it's all important. And that's another thing to make sure that you know, you know, where all your prime and important and statewide soils are in town, which I think in this town, we have a lot of it. So. Yeah. And then the state has, um, you know, the farmland restoration program, state of Connecticut is a farmland restoration program. We're actually talking about potentially get that refunded. That was five million dollars. That Governor Malloy put in in his first term to help farmers reclaim land, put it back into production. The state of Connecticut also has the Farm Link Program. That links farmland owners with people looking to farmland and, and as well does land for good. Has a, it's a private nonprofit regional organization that also links people that have land with people that are, that looking to farmland. So. You know, there's resources out there also to try to keep people. Uh, connected on, on land access.
Once the farmland has grown into its succession type of. Land state. Um. What keeps that from becoming a subdivision?
Uh, it's the wishes of the landowner. As long as it's prime, I mean, just because it's growing trees and not farmland, it, it can be reclaimed. And if it was farmland.
It's just like you're gardening in your backyard, you're gardening for yours and you stop.
Charles' point is the soil.
It's a soil.
Because it becomes forested or harvested or whatever. So.
Right. I mean, there's nothing to stop anybody from reclaiming it, put it back into production. It's the desire of the landowners.
Yeah, that from the farmer's perspective. To acquire. Land that has. Become overgrown. And farm it again. It's more expensive than finding something actively.
Right. And that's why Governor Malloy put in the five million dollars the first time around to help offset. It's a cost share fifty percent match to help farmers offset the cost of bringing land back into production. Cause it is, I mean, if you gotta bring it back from trees, back to farmland, there's a significant cost to that, but that's why the state did that. And that's not to mention just all the hedgerows that grow up and all the other, even under the best of circumstances, there's a lot of. Land that could be reclaimed.
Why isn't that if you had farmland that now is grown over with trees? You cannot apply for four ninety unless you grow squash or something on it.
I, I could do a whole, if you want me to do two hours on four ninety, I'm happy to come back.
I've spoken on four ninety a couple of times.
Yeah, three times. Yeah, that's a whole other subject on the, right.
Well, forget we just passed an ordinance where it doesn't have to be farmed, it just has to be open space. So.
Yeah, that's a whole, but the implementation, you know, the, of, of the existing laws like. Four ninety farmland, forest land, adopting the open space classification, those are all tools. And statutes that have been there for fifty years and they work. So.
One, if I can just back up, you made a point about, um, the town eleven and the bullseye on your, your private property. One of the major. Risks about having a park of an inventory of land to preserve is it become the bullseye for anybody who's looking to develop that. Um, it says, this is flat and clear and available. So, so when I was at the Department of Ag. We very much dissuaded the generation of those lists because it was basically putting out a sign for people who were trying to do whatever. Um, it's better to do things through groups like the Farm Bureau or through those, those coffee conversations. To, to get directly to the property owner rather than listing a website saying, come by me, you know, cause that's exactly what would happen.
I don't, the town, I'll, I'll back up by saying that's, those are tools that the, the land use office has at hand, but they don't. Produce maps and to make them available online. Cause you're right, it would be like just. You know, it, it, it's like a putting up a for sale sign. But for planning purposes, for the use of the planning office in town hall. If they're helpful to have those data layers available in your G I F system.
And we utilize four ninety here. We, to Alan's point, we just did a, a local ordinance on open space. Um, we have properties in town that have gone through the P R program. The open space fund that we, that this board collects from time to time on developments actually funds some of that. We have, we've adopted all of the strategies that we talked about. We own some farmland outright. Um, we lease town owned land, all of those things you talked about. We have different pieces of that that are all being employed.
So I mean, I, I just don't know how much education do you do with the farmers, the landowners in town? Have you had forums?
The gentleman behind you actually, uh, organizes a coffee hour, uh, annually in the non-COVID world to.
Yeah.
To showcase, um, all of the different ser-, all different services that are available through PR N R C S or. Other USD offices or DOAG or Farm Bureau or whoever.
Yep.
Um, and depending on the year, that, that depends either well attended or not.
Yeah. So it sounds like you, you didn't really need the. No, only kidding. You can't, you do, you're, you're doing all the right things. So what are you struggling with?
I think it's getting a major problem is that issue that you pointed out about, um. Owners interest.
Sorry, my back to you. It's not my best side.
You know, it. It comes down to what does the owner of the property want to do with their property? That, that's. What are you going to do? That's, that's really the property owners, right?
We've had currently a lot of interest by solar companies.
Yeah.
We've also laid down a marker though, that we've done our part and we don't really, not that the citing council necessarily will consider that, but. Um, after gravel pits, all of it was developed, it was sold to us as being mostly on a gravel pit. Um, that, once that's done, we'll be responsible for twenty-seven percent of the solar generation in state connect.
Mm-hmm.
That's enough. You know, we don't need these, these small ones. There's five or six others that have expressed various degrees of interest in doing things about it. But we, we've done our part in terms of meeting one of the state's laudable objectives, which is renewable energy generation. The other goal that's in common with that is the open space and part of the preservation target. So. We're a little out of balance right now. I want to get, well, at least let the designers, which is the signing council know that we'd like to shift the paradigm a little bit more to, toward the balance.
Yeah. A, a, and I think there's a lot of sentiment amongst, I think, everybody on this subject matter with perhaps. With the exception of the solar developers to see some sort of statewide direction on this.
You can always tell who wrote the legislation because they're either talking about, um. Uh, certainly feed per kilowatt hour or per megawatt, that's written by the industry.
Right.
It's not, if it's written in legislative parlance, which is grand list or taxation or, you know, mill rates, that's written by not the industry.
Right. Right. I, I think, I know that there's some, a lot of sentiment to address this legislatively, what that's going to look like. I don't. And there's also a lot of look at, at what other states are doing because we'd be, Connecticut, I was at a meeting with, um, about thirty other farm bureaus. Um, and New Jersey is also a bullseye. So New Jersey and Connecticut are.
The garden state.
Yes. New Jersey is struggling, but they have in the same conversation in New Jersey. So there's something between Connecticut, New Jersey. That is, um, we incentivize these things for whatever reason and other states don't.
That's a choose this model is the best one around.
Right. Yep.
Thank you, Joan.
You're welcome. I'll leave these publications with you in my pocket. And if you need more of them, the planning for ag guide, um, they didn't print as many as they. Done in the past, but I've got plenty of conservation options.
Right. Well, those were two really good perspectives. Joan, uh, and some of the conversations that we just had. Kind of triggers right where we want to go to next is kind of a round table from the different commissions. For all the efforts. Tools used to, to. Increase open space in town. Process wise. How's it working? How are we collaborating? Are there things we could do differently? Are there, are efforts to, um, acquire open space or are we doing it the way that we intend? So. I think I may want to kick off with you, uh, whether you don't mind. I know that they touched on a lot of items that you're. As Chair of Conservation Commission, that's the commission that is dubbed in the plan of conservation and development to lead. Open space effort.
Yep. Albert Grant, Chairman of Conservation Commission. And, uh, you know, we've been trying to encourage for. Quite a while to farmers keep land in production and to. Try to, uh. Keep, uh, keep playing in production and keep, uh, land open and, uh. Different ways to do it or to give information and then purchase the development rights is the, is a really permanent way to. Preserve property and, uh. There's also the community farms grant program, which is for smaller farms that are focused on food and fiber. There's a preservation program associated with them. There's also the D E P, which is a cost sharing for a purchase of land. And, uh, there's a local land trust. And I guess our, our feeling is that the best bank for a buck is with conservation easements and agricultural easements. And those, uh, are through the, the state of Connecticut. And so we have done one major one of those and depleted our budget. And. So the state of Connecticut requires twenty-five percent match these days for these projects. So. Our main focus right now is to have money available should projects become. Uh, landlords want to preserve their property and they come to us and they say, we'd like to work something out, but we need to have a match. We're trying to regain our war chest to be able to do that. That's one of the, one of the big things. Uh, there's agricultural land in town, which is important to the looks and the economy of the town. And. We also have the Scannaker Recorder, which is a. Recreational and wildlife habitat, you know. Uh, air quality and all that from the greenway that goes through the town. From one end to the other. And so that's, uh. Maybe more appropriate to have the fee purchase, the D E P grants to purchase space because it's. Less valuable, costs less and people, if the town owns it, then people can walk on it. Whereas private property is private property, especially farmland. You don't really want to have the public walking across your cornfield. So those are the, our concerns with Conservation Commission. And, uh.
At last week's Conservation Commission meeting, you mentioned a couple of parcels for farms that were on the topic of restoration. Right? Can you share that with the group?
Yep. The town has two parcels, uh, in particular that, uh, could use restoration ones in no rows and it's a. I don't know the acreage, if it's. Order of ten or ten or twelve acres, I think. That was a, a set aside and it was a cornfield and since growing up to, you know, trees. Over the last, uh, probably twenty-five years or so. And a farmer in town wanted to reclaim that and applied for a grant and. Grant was accepted, but for some reason it never came to fruition. So it was funding or what exactly the glitch was, but he wasn't able to. Start work in time to prepare it for the, the next year. So that's one that could still be worked on. And, uh, then there's another one. It's a part of COVID farm, which is a. There's a shade tobacco field there that. Uh, has been overgrown and has just been, uh, you know, declining for the last probably, you know, forty years, really the. Folds are rotting and the wires are sinking lower and lower. And, uh. There is a grant opportunity for restoring that to municipalities can get up to a ninety percent. Cost share for the, uh, restoration programs. And so that's, uh, that's one that would qualify for that. We. Had somebody from the state come out and look at it and ascertain that was a viable project. So that's, and it's a. Also kind of a hazard too, because it's a, a place where people do walk and, you know, have trails and, and things.
Jason had his hand up.
Well, I was aware of the, um, town parcel in Norrose. Um, is the farmer who is, who was awarded the grant, is he aware that that's a reimbursement grant?
Right. Yes. But he never, he was waiting for them to say, go ahead and start. And.
He got the award.
He got the award, but you, you didn't have permission to start the process. They need, they. I don't know audience and outs of it, but for some reason, the word from the state wasn't coming to him that he was able to start doing work.
You should have a conversation with Lance Shannon at the Department of Agriculture because I think he misunderstands how that program is supposed to work.
He, I know that he knows that it was a reimbursement grant and that you would have to spend the money first. But he also has to get, have, I thought they had to tell him that. Go ahead, you can start. And this is your year. So it's not.
When I worked there, once you were designated as, as an awardee with whatever that amount was, you then could commence the work. You didn't, they didn't send a second letter saying, go. Um, so I, I, again, I think you should circle back with, with no.
Okay. Yeah, the ship has sailed this year, but for next year, it's still a possibility. There was something the town had to mark, uh, the entrance to it, put pins in to establish the, the entrance and the boundaries, I guess. But again, I don't know all the, it's not, that, that is a parcel that could be, use that grant, could be used to restore it.
And as Conservation Commission, do you work with Melissa on recreational?
No, we haven't really, we haven't had any overlap at this point.
Maybe the master plan will open some of those doors.
Yep, that would be good.
I have a question for you because I suspect, um, one of your many hats, you know this. Um. In summers, there's a lot of open space owned by or managed by, I assume owned by a land trust.
Yeah, Northern Connecticut Land Trust.
Yeah. And I'm not aware of the same kind of thing in East Windsor. It may be there.
The recovery Windsor, we, uh, I'm on the board of the Northern Connecticut Land Trust also. We have, we own the Wapping Bog, which is on the South Windsor line. And that's the only property in East Windsor that we do. Oh, and we'd love to do something in East Windsor. Uh. Land is a lot more valuable in East Windsor than it is in some of the hill towns.
What? We notice at planning zone is when an applicant comes in for a subdivision. The neighbors come forward and feel that it is prime open space. And needs to be preserved. And it's kind of late in the game. And, um. I don't know how fast the land trust could come in for the town. Um. It's hard to keep taking parcels that the town can't maintain. So.
Yeah, really the, the land trust works mostly with foundations and, and grants. We don't really have, we have money to work with, but not, not really much to purchase anything. And the land trust. Works best purchasing and owning the land and being able to maintain it and steward it rather than owning easements. Whereas the town has leverage, you know, through taxes and, and, and records to enforce easements where the land trust doesn't. Have that leverage. Uh, so. We kind of want to not manage little properties. I guess they have to be significant enough that they are recreational value or agricultural value on a lot of agricultural land. Um. So the little parcels, not so much. Good for larger ones. This is what we're most interested in. But, uh, it's a long process to, to, to buy a piece of property with, you know, foundations and grants and everything. It usually takes, you know, over a year to do and. But kind of one of the.
Take, be interested as the land trust in taking a small parcel from a developer.
Uh, probably not. Not in a subdivision, probably not. We have. Not in the subdivision, probably not. We have done in the past and kind of learned a few lessons. That the lawn clippings get dumped there and we have to. Go clean up when people complain and those, those kinds of, of things. But. As far as other projects go, we. We'll have to do something in East Windsor because it's one of the towns that we cover, but don't have much of a presence and. Probably the Scannick River corridor, that kind of a thing would be more the department of the, or more the. What the land trust would be looking for. Unless, unless the person wants to, if they want to stay land preserved. And they want to make sure that it's going to be taken care of and the agricultural land, that's where the land trust can do a better job. Perhaps than the town because they can own the property and direct the use of it is. If it's an easement, then. It could go, well, easements are a bit, easements are limited. Anything else?
Thank you.
Any other thoughts on planning a zoning commission on open space? What's working? What would be helpful when reviewing applications? As far as collaborating?
Well, I think we've kind of taken the approach now with, with any kind of new subdivisions of maybe more of a fee in lieu of. Because like Ian mentioned, having a patchwork of all these little quarter acre lots are really of no benefit to the town. Um, so my question on, on that is, is can we make a concerted effort to sell off some of these small little pieces of property? And use that money to earmark and fund a larger project?
So that's a product that's already underway. Town staff are already ascertaining where those parcels are and trying to figure. The only person you're going to sell them to by a large.
Isn't above.
It's a, yeah, there are a few exceptions to that. And then we're going to, we're going to sell them off for twenty two hundred bucks here, three thousand dollars there. It's like, it's going to be a whole process. There's a problem. We're trying to get a plan in place to do that at the staff before it comes to probably my board, not yours. And because for the discharge of, of property, the board is likely needs to send the property to a town, meaning the town must decide to do it. The behind the scenes stuff is we need to get the buyer. So that's something that we're already working on to Albert's point. I, if you want to have the resources in order to do some of the larger scale preservation stuff. You really need to be in lieu of us. That's, that's the easiest pathway to do it. Budgets are budgets. Everybody knows that there's not a ton of money. That we have to work with. So that's low hanging proof in terms of funding the town's match for a project through NRCS or a project for GOAT. So getting as far away from the town is going to get, you know, this piece of open space as we can and let the town or actually you guys. Decide how to use that money instead of taking on parcels that the town can't get to, that the town has liability exposure for, the town needs to maintain. It's just a smart way to go about it. We have a collection of. Pieces everywhere that we really can't stitch together. We want to stitch together something that's going to make a meaningful impact or in one way or other. Whether it's passive recreation or open space and farmland preservation. You know, the, the little slivers here and there, they're, they're almost always in unusable areas and you can't, you can't get to them anymore.
Right. Yeah. So I mean, that's we've kind of taken that approach. If it wasn't contiguous with any existing open space, we didn't even want to look at it.
Well, and quite honestly, the, I would, I would ask the commission also consider doing the same thing with the, the fee in lieu of sidewalks and making sure that that's somewhat closer to what the prospect is putting in a sidewalk. Those, those are two issues right out the gate. PZC could really make a meaningful improvement on, that would benefit the whole community. So instead of forty percent of the value of the sidewalk, seventy five or eighty percent of the value of the sidewalk gets us to where we can put in some sidewalks.
Right.
Instead, we get, we have sidewalk money that sits around that we can't actually access unless we tap other buckets of money that may or may not be available.
I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, it's been, that's been in process now for two, two months.
Anybody else have anything else to add?
And I don't know if this is. Financially something we can do or not. I know it's not a lot of money, but we do take money in for farm leases. For the parcel, the farm parcel that you do own. Wonder if we could direct that money instead of just to do general fund directed into the old open space fund.
Any questions, Frank?
I know, I was looking around for.
Right. I'll, I'll, I think that you answered that.
It's going to be no.
It's not that much money. We're talking seventeen grand a year.
Same. Income flow into the general fund. It can't be changed.
Would be logical to think the farm rent and the buy for its maintaining. Farming in the town, maintaining land as a.
That's the same question, I think, that Alan's getting towards and I don't, I don't know.
It's actually a little bit different.
Maintenance is another thing.
It was going to be my other question, but yeah. The other way of, you know, putting it just in the open space fund so it can be used for whatever, you know, engineering, you know, R C money that, that, that's, that was my question specifically. But I also think what he's asking is, is taking that revenue and using it to. Do the, you know, the restoration of the other pieces that we own that, that, you know, overgrown. So. You know, just turning that right back into restoring that farmland. So then that becomes a revenue generating as well.
We have a tobacco shed that's going to. Be a, a moneymaker or a liability pretty quickly.
So in, in one of the parcels that was identified by the Conservation Commission, the reclamation of the property was a condition of the, the lease. That was in the, that was a negotiation that was exchanged with a lower lease payment from the farmer in exchange for him clearing the land. That's been done in town several times. Um, in terms of the, I mean, really, what, whatever needs for the tobacco land is he needs the, the match or a restoration. He needs the, the ten percent. And that's even capital. What is the restoration grant cost?
Two years.
So, well, you gotta be awarded in two years. You know, that's the thing.
What was suggested by. I mentioned the same before.
So I, I'll, I'll, I can give you an answer on, on the, the version to the open space one. The other piece of it is just simply appropriation. We just would appropriate the money to do. The expenditure and that, and that comes out in general. We got to find it someplace or we got to do that appropriation for it.
So I'm hoping this was helpful to folks and informative. We can bring this portion of the meeting.
Thank you to everybody who came out to this. And have a conversation about all the words and with the experts. We're going to. Are planning in the agenda. Do you have any, um. Applications? There are a state of applications. Anything under performance bonds? No exceptions, okay? We have a continued public hearings on PZ twenty one dash twenty five thirty three Apothecary Hall Road. And you noticed that it was postponed till ten, well, twenty one. Do we need to do anything with that or?
No, I, I just put it on here so that people would know, but we had some stuff that you guys had identified at the last meeting that we're still working through. And just for the discussion that you guys just had, we moved it.
Great. And then on your new public hearings, PZ twenty twenty one dash twenty six for Wells Road, the special. Is going to start the medical office. Again, that's postponing to ten, well, twenty one. Know on that.
So I think that, so we originally ran the legal notice to open the hearing. So if you could make a motion to push that so that anybody. Was interested would know.
All right, I make a motion that we postpone the new public hearing for PZ twenty twenty one dash twenty six. For Wells Road special use permit to construct the medical office in zone three, map twelve, block twenty four, lot twenty four. Until the meeting of October twelfth, twenty twenty one.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. That takes us now to all business and the zone change application. SJK Properties, zone change from R three to MFDD. For land known formerly as Corey Meadows subdivision. Um. A lot of public comment. We had time to digest that public comment, I believe. We have a memo from the town planner or. Planning consultant planner. Um, do people want to talk about this? You want to go straight to a motion? Are people comfortable?
I'm good for it, the motion. Anything you had changed to this memo?
Uh, not on my end. I, I didn't hear back from the school. I know I didn't, it was a memo that I had reached out looking for some sort of informal. Believe, I haven't heard anything. So I don't have any, anything to add under that.
I, I can't remember when the Scannick. Project went in. I was concerned about the increase in students. And the first year they had three. They, in, in our whole system. And I was just staggered by that. I couldn't believe it, but it was true.
And I can imagine too, when I graduated a long time ago, we had like eighty two people, kids graduating my class. My daughters are freshmen. High school, I think, just like sixty eight kids. So we're not going.
There's not a problem.
There's not a problem. We're, we're not. Skyrocketing. We could use more kids if anything.
Bringing more kids in from out of town to fill our schools. The one piece of the information that I couldn't include is I can't take a stance on it is, you know, we, so I did look at the state data, which shows that the East Windsors enrollment has declined pretty consistently. I just don't know if, when it was, where it was ten, fifteen years ago, if it was too hot, right? If we were busting at the seams, never. So that's the one thing that you all know that I don't, but. Okay.
I, I just, to me, that was due diligence. Someone raised it. So it needed to be discussed.
And I tried to include those items so that people at home or everybody would kind of see.
Their comments were heard. Anything else anyone wants to talk about? If people are good, um, either a motion to approve or a motion to deny would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the application of PZ twenty twenty one dash twenty for zone change application approximately forty eight lot. Known as Corey Meadows from an R three to an MFDD applicant is SJK Properties. This approval was granted and subject. To conformance with the applicable materials and the following conditions and modifications. Under reference plan, there is one item. Under findings, there are three items and under conditions, there are three items. So. And this is in a memo from Mike Damato, originally dated September second, revised September twenty second, twenty twenty one.
Is it appropriate to, to read the findings on the condition of approval if? Before we vote?
Well, should we have a second first?
Read the findings. On, on the motion to approve, which is the red, he had reference plan and he had three findings. I think it's.
I think it's up to reference, reference.
Why don't we have a second and then somebody on the record can put the. Reason for the public to hear.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second.
Now you're in a discussion.
So, under discussion, Frank, that it would be a good idea to raise the findings.
I think it's appropriate that we read the three findings.
Okay.
Under this motion to approve.
I will read the findings. Finding number one, the commission finds a zone change to be consistent with the plan of conservation and development. And the town's comprehensive plan. Finding two, the commission finds the applicant demonstrated during the public hearing that the approval of a zone change to allow for single family detached. Unit residential community will increase housing options and availability within East Windsor. And finding three, the commission finds the most recently adopted sewer service area map for East Windsor indicates that the subject. Property is located within the service area.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion, no further discussion. So a vote is in order. All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So the motion has passed and it's unanimous.
Thank you everyone. Congratulations. Good luck, good luck.
Under, um. New business, do we have anything? Anything under correspondence? Nothing under business meeting? No second session, so a motion to adjourn would be.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.